We started tutoring this morning, so I was like chatting with. He's so nice. I was like, I gotta go. He's like, I have school committee.
I walked in right before you. You had trouble getting everyone out the door this morning.
Yes, I was like, so I was like, yeah.
Guys, I'll need you to go so I can get ready. Stop talking to me.
Exactly. I'm like, okay. But I like love her, so. What were they all doing today?
The older two were involved at the KFC at Big Ball.
Oh.
And then Reese didn't get in, so he was just following Lauren around.
Did you have to bring him over there?
Um, I didn't bring them today. Lauren was doing it, but I was struggling to get them up.
Golf, yeah, but I feel like testing that.
Um, we went to Topgolf and my parents are big golfers and Lauren's a big golfer. And they're swing is horrible. And I was like, guys, they were like, we're good. We're really good at golf. I was like, you're not. And if you don't pop up to see you or daddy, like, you gotta get better.
Matt and I don't golf, but um.
At the middle school, though, next year, they started doing um one and a half days or they were doing it after school.
I saw that they went to Topgolf.
They like went to Topgolf, which like I thought was like fun, sort of like a ski club and stuff like for golfing. So yeah, so they're already doing better, which is great. Cause like, yeah, Lauren went the other day and I was like, are you taking them with you? And he was like, no. And I was like, when? When are you taking them with you? He was like, when they can actually, when they can hit the ball. Great, I can help with that.
You guys can go take my kids this summer.
Yeah.
Either use of their Topgolf membership. I'm like, might as well use that. One of my clients.
Have you been?
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. I guess they got some cool games and some cool tech to track the ball.
Yeah, it's pretty fun.
Like those targets. Who's your guy?
Really?
A lot of soccer flying around. Sun came up, melted it one day. I see it.
It would be like today.
Uh, welcome, everybody. Let's see, so let me, before taking public input, let me just walk through the day. Cause uh, you guys can tell me, Jeff and Michelle, if I have it right. So we're gonna have um regular meeting. Initially, um, we're just gonna review and potentially vote on the school start times. Jeff's gonna give us a update on the strategic plan and kind of a summary. And then um, I think we're gonna look at um, policy review as the three topics for the regular meeting. Uh, at that point, we are, and let me make sure I get this right. We're gonna close out the regular meeting. So we're gonna adjourn the regular meeting and then we're gonna open up the workshop. And I believe we're gonna have the Medfield TV broadcasting the regular meeting and the workshop will be on the owl.
Correct, yeah.
Jeff has a new configuration that we've been working on for weeks. It's gonna bring out.
Tetris to get them all in the right spot.
Yeah, that's gonna bring out those, those thinking caps that will let us really work through. And um, and so we'll, we'll go through the agenda on the workshop at that time. Um, and then just to complete the day, we're gonna run the workshop until twelve. Uh, then we are gonna break for an executive session with um our, our school resource officer. Um, which we typically do to go through some of the sort of calls.
Mm-hmm.
Around that, and then whatever, if we don't finish the workshop, we will then re- uh, come back from the executive session to the workshop.
Which is a separate posting.
Right.
So the one o'clock was a separate posting based on, you know, what we learned last year with the open meeting law complaint on a workshop. And then the determination that if it's going to be that long of a break, that we should do a second posting. So that's why we did the second posting.
Yeah, so, and for those, th- this is public. So expectation, the, this regular business may go, you know, I'm thinking maybe an hour or so. May go plus or minus.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we will, no matter what, be breaking for the executive session at twelve and we will be coming back. We have one, worst case, there's a little bit of leeway, but if it's more than fifteen minutes. The public, you know, our audience of six, four?
Eight.
Yeah, zero. Uh, but we wanna make sure uh.
No, people.
Yeah, Christine's watching.
Okay, so that's that. And if there is nobody, is anybody live on Zoom? Uh, Christine Powers, and she is a resident. I can ask.
Can I ask if she has any public input? Wait, did we open the meeting?
We haven't yet.
Yes.
We did. We didn't take on.
Andrea just whispered. We'll take a roll call. Tim Knight here.
Michelle Kirk be here.
Leah Brum here.
Will Horn here.
Diana Frasella here.
Here. Um, public input, is there any public input? And if there is, I will remind everybody of the policies.
Correct. Uh, okay, hand being raised. Okay, Chris Potts, has our hand raised?
Okay, so, and just, uh, reminder, I didn't hear originally, I heard just there was one person. Um, so, uh, members of the public will be welcome to comment during the public input. It sounds like Chris, you're on Zoom today. Um, if you can, please bring on your cameras, state your name and address, so everybody knows where you're from. And um, we ask that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So, uh, Chris, um, Michelle, can bring her forward.
Do we bring her over to panelists? Are you able to promote her, Carlos, so she can speak?
Yeah, she should be a panelist when we're back down to the audience. I think the AC working quite well here. And when else, I got the weather inside, the climate outside.
Also, I'm sorry, not Christine Power. Bring over Chris Potts, Chris McQ Potts, the other one.
Is Christine Power participating?
No, she probably has that on the background. She's.
We all have this. So she doesn't need to be a panel.
No.
And then you can put Christine Power back as our audience. Hi, Chris, if you could turn on uh, your video so we can see you and then.
Um, I'm okay if you don't have video and if you're up there with that, Chris. Uh, we, yeah, but we can hear you. It's Medfield TV.
Um, so my question is, from my understanding is that anytime a contract for leasing space of the school needs to be reviewed by school committee and approved by school committee before it can be executed. So, and I think that even just as an informational item, it would be important that the. It's a wonderful thing that we are accommodating kids for, because I know they've been in a tight spot. I'm a huge fan of after-school programs, because I was on the MAP board for two terms and was president. So this is not, um, this is not a criticism at all of, of the after-school program using the space. It's about governance. It's about ensuring that the school committee is involved with significant contractual decisions. Um, and in fact, when, if you rent to a, a for-profit that uses a space during the school day, um, which beginning years have done, that actually is supposed to go to destiny as well. So that's master general law. Uh, so this is, there's something that a school committee needs to address. These decisions are made with accurate input. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I said, I didn't mark that down. I mean, we discussed that, but we'll just make sure, you know, all that are dotted and keys are crossed and. Okay, any other comment? Okay, that's not working now.
Then she's okay.
If you, or no, do we need in bulk for the Zoom?
Right.
I'm just gonna ask Carlos. I mean, definitely would need it is for the, you know, workshop or worst case, we use it. Couple of computers. Coming back with it. Okay. Um, are we okay to continue if the owls not working? And again, worst case, probably using one of the cameras. Let's see, see if it's working.
I see you and Tim.
That's his camera.
I don't think it's just the camera on the computer, right?
Yeah, yeah. So do you wanna, for right now, Carlos, maybe you can turn that, your computer? So at least we can see each of us and then maybe we can try to play with the owl. I think it would be, yeah, we're gonna change it, yeah, so that the, it can all be seen. And then, I don't know if you have. Do you have any room to push it back? So uh, we can see Will and Diana, or they can see Will and Diana. Yeah, that's, I'm not sure. Oh, there it goes. Murphy's Law here. Okay, so now the owl's running. So I fixed it. I suggested you move the table.
You did.
Um, at any time, you can start laugh, stop laughing at my, or maybe Will will step in.
Okay, there it is.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good.
Thanks, Carlos.
So consent agenda, um, one is the regular meeting minutes from the June sixth meeting. Second is donations, and I'll just give the donations. Uh, five hundred dollars from the Special Olympics to be deposited in the Blake gift account. Eight hundred seventy dollars from the Blake PTO for the Blake gift account. Eighteen thousand dollars from the Wheelock PTO, uh, to be deposited in the Wheelock gift account. And one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars from the Wheelock PTO, uh, paid directly to Connolly Bus. I'm guessing that. Probably that's something they were funding. Uh, so those are the donations and the um, minutes from June sixth. So uh, is there a motion to approve?
They'll move.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good.
Just to note to the chair, I'll still on and the panel. And then I also wanted to know if you guys are recording.
Yeah, I think we're recording.
It doesn't show the recording button.
Um, Medfield TV is recording.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so either shell or. Okay. Um, so school start times, so just, um, one, I think the, the plan is to just review them quickly and then we've said potential vote. Uh, we all had a presentation on the June sixth meeting. Any questions, comments, thoughts, concerns that have come up?
Meeting. Two conversations that had with folks about it, they were, one, felt we were voting on a specific time. I don't know, I kind of felt like the conversation we had with Dr. Meyersman was that they were gonna go and, we were voting on executing the exploration of school start time and not a specific time.
Correct.
Correct. So we're not actually voting on a time today.
So you have to do a second vote. So if you vote to approve this today.
Right.
Then that will initiate negotiations that will begin with the teacher association, and then that's when we'll nail down those times.
Correct.
And then we'll bring in a second one to you to vote.
Right.
That's what you approve or you say go back and figure that out?
That's what I relayed to these people and I just wanted to make sure that was accurate, what we were voting on today. Cause I think there was some impression that we were voting on a time today. And so I was like, no, I don't think we're voting on a time, because no one's explored anything with teachers and busing and with traffic patterns and other things, so.
I had similar, people reach out to me with those type of questions as well. Uh, so I guess my only comment or question would be with us authorizing, uh, usually going to negotiations with the teachers, you know, right now. Can we put any sort of hard deadline that we can expect to be voting so that we are telling families we know we're voting on the, the date, the times by this date? And that's what we'd be looking at. So what's realistic then, if we authorize today?
So just, so if one, one minor.
Yeah.
I think it would be, I would, I would just word it as with a target date, total completion by X or alternatively, um, you know, at that point, you would give us something.
Yeah, I think that, but that would help the people to reach out to us, you know, like the next step of this, and this is when you can just.
Right. There's information, we'll be communicating a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they indicated to me that they don't wanna start till September.
Yep.
Those conversations, so my sense is that we would, we would meet several times, September, October, and try to get something done by the end of October.
Okay.
Would, would be my expectation, but we'll see how that goes.
Okay.
So if you guys wanna set a hard date on that, that's fine with me, or honor about a target date, that's, that's fine.
I feel like we can look at, we have our school committee.
I think we need to, because now we're getting, right, people just need to know the plan.
Correct.
Right.
I think.
Right.
We need to be able to set a date.
November fourteenth?
November fourteen, what's the only one?
I mean, October ten. Yeah, just the, um. Yeah, it would be great for planning purposes, it was October ten.
Okay. And then we'll just keep it on the agenda for every day going forward, so like every meeting day going forward, so we do have an update to be able to give the public.
I mean, it's negotiations, so I really can't do a update.
We could just have it on there as a place where we can be.
Yeah, for sure.
I think the.
Keeping at the forefront.
We only get a, we don't know the date when it's like too late. But like even if for planning purposes, if by October, we knew it would either be, so remember there are three options, the secondary starts at eight twenty-five and elementary at nine. And then the other two options were a little tighter, you know, elementary or secondary school at eight thirty-five, elementary at eight. Or secondary at eight forty-three, elementary at eight oh eight.
I think that's.
If it was the nine o'clock, you know, like if, if you at least knew the tighter range.
Well, I think what we try to focus on is the times, the first thing, right? Cause there's lots of other issues to discuss.
Right.
If we focus right on the timing, so that we can at least get an agreement that it's gonna, it's going to be this time. And then we can get that out earlier, but still, you have to do negotiations, so. Cause there's lots of little, little items that you.
Yeah, there's a bunch of little steps between there that they have to go through. So I think we wanna give them time and not rush that. So I want Jeff to come back October fifteenth and say, we need two more weeks.
Yeah.
I'd rather say, let's do it November and have it solid, cause this, union's gotta go back to their membership and get feedback and then bring it back, you know? They have, they have to survey their folks as well.
And I can ask if they wanna start in August. I mean, I can do that.
But is it helpful for us to say, we need information by November fourteen and then we start earlier to make sure that we're getting.
Sure, sure.
Should we shoot for October, seven, November?
October ten.
I mean, cause we're like losing some of this, part of this whole thing was to get it done by June. I know, we didn't get, we didn't. Yeah, yeah, so we have like a full year now for like, on November, if we miss November, so I understand it's probably a little more pressure to find you and the union. So we can shoot for October.
You said that was October tenth, was that what you mean?
I agree, cause that's still plenty of time to give people.
Yeah, cause if we miss October, we're missing November, we're like.
That's really bad, yeah.
To, to me, the big swing is that if elementary school, one of them is nine and the other one is eight or eight oh eight. Right, so like the plan, that's a big difference. Like if everybody, if the public knew it was option two or three, at least it's like, okay. If every, we can say at least start planning, if we, within eight minutes, you have an idea, you know? Um, but I think that would be a great idea, which would be an update. Like, yeah, let's just put it on the agenda in the September meetings, if you had an initial meeting.
Yeah.
But I, I know, so that they can start September.
Our target potential vote then would be October ten. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I think it will spend enough time to.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, outline the process in the newsletter that went out, right? I put in there exactly what, what has to happen, the next step, so. I put in there exactly what, what has to happen, the next step, so hopefully folks took a look at that and understood that there's negotiations that go part of that as well, it's not just.
I've heard from a few staff members too, they're talking about it, so it's on, it's on everyone's radar, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, everyone, everyone knows what's going on.
I think the faster they're able to voice their opinion, the better.
Yeah.
And I didn't, I should have thought of this earlier, but if you have that process in the newsletter, should we link to that in the packet? So in case anybody references during the session.
And you could add both, you could add the presentation.
Yeah, the presentation link, and then whatever that update, so that would be in this packet. Somebody had emailed us asking about it as well, I pointed them out, but it just, yeah, it would be, it would be a nice.
So maybe that gets added to the buttons. Maybe that's what we do, the buttons on them, which, I don't know if you noticed, we upgraded some of the stuff on them, which I'll get to a little bit later, but maybe that, that goes to the school start time committee button, and we link it in there as well.
Okay.
So that information is there for anyone that wants to.
So. And just actually, while we are talking about, so one is obviously the time, what are the other, are there any other big moving parts you see as you work with the MTA?
I would say teacher workday as a part of this, because that could shift. Obviously, the end time is something that we have to adjust as well. Some of the feedback that we got, which I think is really good feedback, is that currently, right now, we have certain clubs that meet before school, even some athletic teams that practice before school, and if we're really committed to this, we really try to, we want to limit any of that happening. You know, if we're gonna adjust times, we're not gonna have the school coun, the student council meet it, you know, before, a half hour before school, but this defeats the purpose of doing this. Right, so just kind of getting people's schedules in there. A big wild card, I think, would be hockey, because hockey comes up again at school meeting. Because they're the, getting the sheets of ice, I mean, it's, we've, the girls team this past year had a sheet of ice at 5:30 in the morning, and they've had that for years. So trying to, you know, look and see what that looks like and how that impacts and that kind of thing, so, sorry. So we have to just kind of figure that out too, if we're gonna commit to having a start time that's later for high school kids, it doesn't mean we move things before school. That's not the intent.
No, but I think, I think that already happened before school, I feel like, right, if hockey needs that, I feel like those kids are choosing to play hockey, and that's like a lifestyle choice, like, they can still practice before school, they always have, but maybe now they can do it a little bit, but 6:30 instead of 5:30, so you've still given them an hour back there. I just think, right?
Yeah, I was just saying the same thing, like, granted, we don't want to have everything meet before school now that we know our kids want to do, but those are elective things, right? We're doing the best we can for all the kids, sleep a little more, and if you choose to play hockey or to be on, like, the leadership thing, but.
Right.
I agree, we still, like, in the spirit of this, do the best we can, but like, those are choices versus we're trying to make the best move we can for all our kids.
Yes.
So I, I think it's actually a really good point. It's almost would be the concept of grandfathering in, those that are already doing it. Because as soon as you lose that time in the morning, many other clubs could say, great, let's move before school.
Right.
Right, and now we're really are defeating the purpose.
Yes.
Right, so I think, I think it's, it is, like, I, I'm not, you know, we shouldn't mandate.
But get into the moving parts piece, that's another moving part, is the teacher workday. So if we're gonna move this and adjust it a certain way, it might fit better in the teacher workday, in theory, to do before school versus after school.
So all of these clubs.
So that's why we need to be really consistent and careful with that.
No, it's good, it's good to think through, and, and I, I do agree, we don't want to mandate, but like, if all, if, if that becomes the norm, we really haven't, you know, there's a lot, there's very large percentage of kids.
Right, so we have to just kind of work through that a little bit, making sure that, that time works out. I think transportation is something we have to just keep working with, you know, that's something that impacts a lot of kids and a lot of families, so making sure that they're, they've assured us they'll be able to do it, you know, as long as we have the 35 to 37 minutes or whatever in between, that they'll be able to do that without adding any buses, which obviously is the financial piece that we don't want to get in, into, so I think that's, that's a positive, but just working through all of that. To me, the negotiation part is the, the actual start and end time, and as I put in the newsletter, even though the contract does state school committee can establish starting end time, it is a change in working conditions that needs to be impacted by, so going through that process, it's a teacher workday, it's a student day, it's a starting and end times, other real key things that have been negotiated. We'd have to expand it, yeah, for sure, so we do the before school care, you know, that's in-house, so we would just expand it and give, you know, more opportunities for, for kids, additional space, staffing, those kind of.
We did a vote to give you permission to do this, right?
Yeah, I was just, I was just kind of, I was just amending it, I had some notes I wanted to add, so it was either October 6th, or what was the other date?
The 10th was the October 10th.
October 10th or November.
14th.
Okay, so, yeah, before taking this to a vote, actually, we do typically open this, open that up, is there any, any, or any other comments, questions amongst this group before going to vote, is there any public comment?
There's a question that says, what are the ranges of dismissal times, because we've not shared at the last meeting? Just start time, if you vote to proceed with exploration vote, this needs to be addressed, it's part of the negotiation. Also, it's all parts of the negotiations. In the start time, you have to have the day for a certain amount of hours, so I can only talk about the meeting, right, like, whatever the day is now. It's like 7 hours and 10 minutes, you take like 8 o'clock at 7 hours and 10 minutes, you know what I'm saying? So it's standard.
There's a mandated amount of time on board, perhaps, if they're.
Yeah, it's not changing the amount.
We meet that now, right, because it was a time when we were missing that.
Yeah, I don't think it's, you know, as part of the negotiations, I don't think it's, we're gonna reduce the amount of time, but we probably look at maybe additional time. It's, it's secondary level, I, I think we've looked at some analysis on the amount of time that elementary versus secondary spend with, with kids and FaceTime, so we have to look at that a little bit. I think that'd be part of the conversation. We wouldn't be able to say what the end time is, because we have to negotiate that.
All right, so I will read this, and then if there's a motion for vote to accept the recommendation from the school start time committee, which would then allow us to initiate negotiations with the MTA and agree on final time and any other.
With the intent on agreeing on that final.
Yeah, yeah, with the intent on agreeing on final time and any other detail. The expectations, we would get an update in October, and potential vote if those negotiations are complete, either on, you know, the October 10th meeting, or ideally, worst case, target that by the November 14th meeting, and there's no requirement for that, those are just, those are targets that we'd like to achieve.
And I would say that, you know, as we do the all negotiations, as we're going through them, it'd be an executive session that we would discuss the details of that with the entire committee. So the, the 10th is not be the first time you hear anything about.
Here. Is there a motion? If I can read it again.
Sure, read it.
Yeah. Vote to accept the recommendation from the school start time committee, to then allow us to initiate negotiations, negotiations with the MTA and attempt to agree on a final time. Expectation is that we would get an update in the October 10th public meeting. An update and or vote on the October 10th meeting, as well as the 11-14 meeting, necessary, there may be an executive session before that point.
Yeah, I don't think we need that, but sure, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, we'll get that going. Next up, Jeff's gonna walk us through an update on the strategic plan, and I think it's also required. At the end of the year, you know, we can also talk a little bit beyond that. I, as we go into workshop a little later, I think it is always, part of it is, what did we do last year? And, you know, I also think about, hey, you know, based on that, what might we do next year? So, you know, we'd love to hear, as, as you're going through that update, just, you know, I had some notes as I was reading it. So, okay, great, you did that, now what? You know, so that, that may help us with the priorities discussion.
So if you remember what we did, what we decided when we approved the strategic plan, when you folks approved that, that there would be an update at the end of the year, there would be a kickoff kind of every September, in which we talk about some of the focus that we're gonna have for that school year in September. It'd be a midpoint update in January, which we did, and then kind of an end of the year update, which we're gonna do right now, so just, again, following that same path that you folks decided on and thought that was, and I think it's a great cadence to kind of do this, do it this way. It's seven pages long, the, the update, but I will, I'll try to hit some of the high points as we go through, and please stop me at any time as we go through this. You'll see that I broke it into by, by area, so the first one being safety, belonging, and well-being. And I would just hit on some of the, the high points here, the 1.2 promote sense of belonging. We've done some professional development in, in January with the entire leadership team, 6 through 12, and everyone else in the leadership team. And we have an R and D group reading, meeting right now at the Blake Library, going through and planning for additional culture responsible train, responsive training, conversations through the school year, and then representatives from every school within this R and D that's happening right now, and that group is, is being led by Brenda Hagan from the high school, and Nat Bond from the middle school, but there are representatives for the entire district, part of that group right now. One of the big ones that you folks were involved in, obviously, was the move towards full day kindergarten for all, which we presented in the FY25 budget, and you asked us to go back and look at it again. And the school committee approved the, the model that eliminates tuition FY28, which is after that large group that is scheduled to come through in FY27. Continue to incorporate student voice, 6 through 12, we had students participating in the school start time committee, and they did a survey for grades 8 through 12, and that whole process, so that was really positive, got a lot of good feedback in addition to what we reported on in January. The DEI efforts, that's, again, what's, what's going on right now, is the R and D session, which Nat and Brenda are just planning and, and looking at how it's gonna play out for the 25, for the 24, 25 school year, the curriculum view piece is ongoing.
Can I pause?
Yeah.
On, actually, I'm gonna go and see, it's just, one, I just had a note, and then for the panorama surveys.
Yes.
In general, what do we, what do we do?
So we have the student data that we, we did the 6 through 12, we have meetings with leadership and go through that information, and then it, it allows us to, are there any kids that maybe weren't on our radar, that now are on the radar, that we need to work with guidance on, but it, we use it to identify any kids that, that need additional supports, you know, based on their responses, because it is all about SEL. So that's, that's what we've done at, at leadership meetings to go through that. And we did not do the, the family one, the panorama recommended doing that in October timeframe. So that's, we're gonna do that this year in October to get that information, and then do the, the kids again in October as well.
Yeah, no, it's interesting, I remember when we initiated that, the idea was sometimes, what do the kids think are the bigger issues, what do the parents think? And do you have, sometimes, it's, it's really always, and even originally, it was what the teachers thought. And then the second question I had just was on the 1 that 3, so you're, that, you're saying we do the task force model? That the, you're thinking about it in terms of the evolution of the DEI?
Yeah, so we had the task force, so I think what we're looking at right now is doing some internal work with each grade level, excuse me, each school, and, and try to have a key, a couple of key people at each school, and get this group together that they're planning this today, and get them together at certain times during the year, but almost have like school captains on this issue, you know, how we can report back there, their responsibility would be at faculty meetings to lead discussions, report back on the overall work that's happening as a district, but that, again, that, the details will have to be planned today in the R and D for the entire day. Examining school safety, reinstating the school resource officer, which we were able to do, which is excellent, and I know he'll be meeting with us, executive session today to review some things. One of the things that we didn't do that I think probably should happen in the fall is look at a school committee policy for cameras, updating that. I think we need to really make sure that we're, we're updated around that area, we were doing additional camera installation this summer, so that's some of the stuff that we'll talk about in executive session. Safety professional development, Medfield Police and the Massachusetts State Police did its school safety in October. And then in addition, we're looking at doing additional training in the fall for all staff from the SRO, in, in a local training versus paying someone, a consultant outside to do that, and then we're looking at formalizing this, this threat assessment teams, which we have some in place, as we do it kind of ad hoc as needed, but we want to formalize that into a, a process, which I think we'll talk about later today as well. The town safety committee has been really positive. The Medfield Fire Chief, Medfield Police Chief, and Medfield Deputy Chief for Police, we've met numerous times during the school year, we try to do it every month, and we just talk about issues that pertain to the school from both sides, to see where we can make improvements. For instance, when we do a, a safety drill, we're having conversations, because both police and fire attend the safety drills, we'll have conversations and debrief after that, and try to, you know, make changes and improvements, but that's been really good, and that's really where the, the threat assessment team information has really been shared, and and now we're looking at doing the training for that in the fall for leadership and then key members of staff to be part of the threat assessment team. Start times, I think we, we know what, what happened there, and thank you for that, that positive vote to keep it moving. And thank you for Diane and Will to be part of that, that was really helpful to have your perspective on that committee, as will parents and committee members. Community engagement, I think we've done a really good job with working with Chris and having him do that assessment of how we communicate and how to improve that. And I think we've done some, some pretty good improvements so far with the central office newsletter that I've gotten some really good feedback on from parents, and it really is, and we look at that, and we, we've said to ourselves, we meet every Monday, the leadership, central office leadership, is something we, we definitely should have done before, it's, we're so busy and we're doing all this stuff, but we assume sometimes people understand what we're doing, and this really gives a, a lens into what we're, we're working on, what the key objectives are, and allows people to, to understand, like, for instance, in the latest edition with Michael putting all the, the summer projects on. So people don't understand all the stuff that goes on in the summer in the buildings, and that really articulated it really well, so, and then, you know, highlighting the Jim James Award, and, and then showing all the different professional development that we've had this year, which is obviously in this report as well, so a, a great way to showcase all the work that, that's going on, but keeping the parents in the loop as well. So we're, I'm gonna meet with Chris again at the end of this month, he has some recommendations, I know, Michelle, you had asked him before on some recommendations on engagement and getting more parents involved, and he, he's putting together a template of how we can do that, so that's been really good. We also, as I alluded to earlier in the meeting, we keep looking at the website to improve that, if you look at the website now, there's the buttons that we have in the middle that were something that we had there, but they weren't, they were just, you know, triangles with words. Now we have icons that go with them, so that it's, it's more catching of the eye for people to see that. The state of the schools is up there, which is another one of our communication goals that we had, and then, Michelle, I don't know if you've seen it yet. Okay, so the live feed, yeah, so the, the live feed now, that has school committee post, before it had, it was a read more.
Yeah.
And you couldn't see the image, but we've asked them to change it, so the image is right there for people to see, so that's, that was a positive change that Chris had recommended too, so that it's not that extra step for people to have to read more than click on something, this puts it right up there, so we're gonna continue when Owen gets back from vacation. Aptegee is doing some more refresh ideas, and we're gonna look at it in July, and August, and hopefully have some additional ideas to bring forward to you. On the, the communication of core values, I think we've done a really good job with that this year, you know, we have the, the vision statement and the mission statement, the core values in every classroom and every room in the district. We've incorporated that into all of our meetings, all of our practices, it's prominently displayed on the central office newsletter on the bottom, that's, it's there all the time, it's in our presentations. It's prominently displayed on the central office newsletter on the bottom, that's, it's there all the time, it's in our presentations. And we reference it whenever we have issues in the district to reference back to decisions being made based on our core values. Website, we just talked about that. Home school connection, you know, that I think the high school and middle school conferences were a great success for parents and for teachers. Lot of good feedback from teachers on, on the, having that connection with parents, even though it's only a few minutes, but it's really a worthwhile few minutes. I know it's, it is a hectic day for them. But I, I think from the faculty advisory that I meet with every month, they were really positive on the outcomes of that and the good feedback they're getting from parents. That was good. They did make some improvements in the spring, based on some of the scheduling, the high school changed their time to put additional time in between and allowed folks to, to pick a time, and then they shut it down, both middle school and high school shut it down, and then reopened it again as slots were open. Giving people the Zoom versus in-person option, I think was welcome. It was about fifty-fifty in most of the schools, Zoom versus in-person, so that was good. But I think that overall, I, I know that was something that we really focused on in the last negotiations, we thought was important. And I think universally, feedback has been great. I, I, we continue to work well with our school-based organizations as we saw at our last meeting. They were phenomenal, super supportive this year, and I think they always could need additional help and additional folks to help out, but you see that we really couldn't operate as a district the way we do without the support of our parents and these outside organizations, so. Can't say enough about the great work that they've done to, for us this year. Curriculum instruction assessment is a lot there. I would just showcase the, updated the curriculum maps of Blake Middle School and, and the high school, and that project's been completed, that's been a couple of years in the making. So I know that Christine is finalizing those, and I think we'll put those up on the website near where the elementary ones are. Still looking at the formalized curriculum review process, we, we haven't finished that part yet. But I think we've done a lot with professional development, as you see in, in pages four and five. A lot of really good professional development, and six, actually. One more I'd like to highlight on, on page five. One of the things that we thought was a really important thing to do this year is to provide some professional development with our district department chairs and our, and six to twelve administrators, so. Leadership certainly gets a lot of, of training and, 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 and work on leadership. But most of our department chairs were our teachers in the district and didn't get a lot of that training that, that we certainly got as, as part of leadership. So we did monthly seminars with Dave Casteline, Dave's a former principal in Newton, he's done some great work with us on evaluation. We had Dave come in and work with us on calibrating evaluation, probably five or six years ago, he worked with all the evaluators and, and did some really good seminars with that. So we carried that over and did some enhancing department chairs, leadership roles and skills this year, which started out in the fall, we had a low in the middle because Dave goes down south for most of the winter, and then came back in the spring and, and did some more work with our, with our department chairs and administrators. So really positive reviews on that. And then I also highlight the DLD, which we've talked about in this, in this setting before, but we focused on artificial intelligence, AI, it was really a great conference with a couple of keynote speakers and then other conferences and workshops as part of that, that our teachers gave some really good feedback on, on that. And, and it's still new to us, right? It's still new to education in general. There's definitely mixed feelings about how it's being used and what it should be used for. I know there are certain departments that feel like it should never be used. And there are other departments that think it's a great time saver. So I think just trying to getting over the, it's not going away is, is the bottom line, right? So we gotta figure out how we can navigate it to improve instruction and learning for us, and then help kids navigate it so that they're still learning and developing those skills they need to develop, and not just throw something in chat and, and have it spit it out. So I think that was a really good, and there's definitely more to come with AI, we're, we're definitely not done with that. And then R and D this summer, we'll have some presentations for you at the end of the, end of the summer, beginning of the fall on some of the R and D topics, but all of them are really, all of them are directly related to our strategic plan, that was part of the criteria that which we chose, and that's been really positive for the ones that started in the last couple of days. I'll take a breath there, and if anyone has any questions, comments.
Well, I would just say, give you a shout out for the differential instruction, you didn't mention that when we merged those. I think that's one of the hardest things for teachers to do, so I appreciate you put some time into that.
It really is difficult, yeah, thank you, it's difficult. We had someone from another district that has done some really good work around this, worked with our secondary teachers on that in the beginning, then they asked for them to come back and do some additional work. I think our elementary people do a really good job with this, I just think it's challenging for middle and high because they, they have sections and they have, you know, different levels, and it's almost sometimes done for them, but we know we can differentiate even more, even within a level. So I think that was, you know, they requested that and, and they did a really good job with that, and then implementation is, is ongoing with that. So thank you for that, Will. Looking at our multi-tiered system of support or MTSS, that group seventeen-person committee worked all, all school year on that, they concluded their work in June, and they will do a presentation for you in the, at the August or September meeting, outlining what the framework is and how we're gonna implement that within the district. Lot of good stuff there, led by Christine and Mary, did a really good job with that group. The pre-K to twelve social emotional learning curriculum, this is something that we've been talking about for a while. Dave Worley got some folks together, and they met throughout the, the school year as well. They've identified two different programs that we can look at as a district, and they're asking people to look at, not, not a full-scale pilot, but just try out some different lessons from these two project, these two programs this year coming up, and then we'll start looking at it. We're not gonna be able to afford to do an SEL curriculum and elementary curriculum in the same fiscal year, it's just too expensive. So we're just looking at, kind of standardizing the SEL across the district because we have different pockets doing different things, and Dave is leading that work, and we'll, we should have some, some idea of what we're gonna do by the end of the fall, early, early winter, but it, I don't think, we'll have to work the numbers, I don't think we'll be able to afford to do both in the same year, because just ELA alone is gonna be really expensive at the elementary level. But that work continues, teachers are excited about trying out different, different facets of those programs. And we continue to work on the transitions between schools and grades. I think that's something that will be ongoing, especially based on our structure of having two years in elementary school, and then the eighth grade to ninth grade continues to be something that, that folks are working on, I believe there's an R and D on that as well this year too. So the finance facilities and personnel, just a couple of things that I think are important in there, I know we, we know that the, the the solar projects, the Blake has been, the roof has been completed, but there's been some hiccups with the other ones. And I think one of the things that came out with the Memorial canopy is that once our folks took a look at the plans, meaning the DPW and Town Player and those side, those, those people on the town side, they didn't love the way it was designed, so they asked them to go back and redesign that. We haven't seen the redesign yet, I know that they, they had at a planning board meeting last week, the week before. And, and Mo has been great from the DPW, Maurice has gone through it, it just has a really good lens of, okay, this is great, but the drainage is gonna go here and cause problems for pedestrians, for vehicles, and all that, so they've, they've reworked it, Select has reworked that, and we're gonna take a look at it next couple of weeks. And then we'll, we'll see where, where that goes. The middle school and high school ones are just on hold right now. Those are big projects, and we need to get the smaller ones done before we do the middle school, high school. It is a little frustrating because I feel like we're pushed like crazy la, end of last school year.
Right.
To get all this done, and then it's like, once it gets into the different boards, it, it just kind of slows it down, so.
But maybe that's part of, the push to get it done, is at least, that's when, that's when the work starts.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
And I, I actually like the idea of not parallel work streams, you're learning a little bit and how we're all working together.
Right.
With the, the smaller ones.
And I think the, the one at Blake was really straightforward, just, you know, it's a new roof, a new section of the roof, and applying the, the the device is right on there, and it's been, it's been fine. The only hiccup we had is when they turned it over to use, power went out at Blake during the school day for about six, seven minutes, and then it got restored back, but they didn't give us really a heads up on that one, so people were a little frantic there for a few minutes. So I think that's something that we continue to work on, and we'll give you updates on that as, as it progresses. The partnership with the, the town leadership and warrant committee, I think, you know, this is something to highlight because we had two different articles at town meeting that we worked with the town and the warrant committee on, and they both passed. I think that's something that the, the special education fund, which was something we've talked about for a while. And I think that once we were able to understand the value and, and see the value of it, it made a lot of sense. So that and the additional fund to offset costs for a new elementary school. I think we're just really good collaboration and, you know, always highlights again how the town has always had schools first, thinking about the schools first, and, you know, making, making decisions based on that, so. You know, really thank the town for that, and also the, the warrant committee and Christine Freewiler for having those conversations and, and getting that forward so that we could put those in place. The five-year plan, Michael represents the school department on the capital plan committee. There's a lot of identified projects that are on there, all past FY twenty-five, and then in the newsletter we put all the actual building-based projects that will be happening this summer. We are disappointed about the, the tennis courts, we know that was something that folks really were looking forward to having new tennis courts there, and we were as well, but we just can't get any bidders, they're, they're just booked up for years. And we don't want to have, we want to make sure that we have the right company to do it, and someone that has done this work before and comes in at a reasonable. But when Michael comes back from vacation, we're gonna repost that again and bid it. See if we can get someone else to, to, to look at it. But the other projects are all underway, we have asbestos remediation going on right now at Dale Street as we replace some of the tiles in those areas. So Steve's had to work at Memorial all week because no one could work in, in Dale Street because of what they're doing in there in the certain areas by the, by the library and the main hallway, so. That continues to be something that we work on and we upgrade because we know, we don't know when the new school is gonna happen, but you know, we have kids and teachers going there for at least, you know, four or five more years, so we want to make sure that's, it's up to snuff. So I would say that the capital projects that list in the newsletter is really clear what we're doing. And then I think the, the budget streams, which, you know, Eric came last meeting to look at increasing user fees for boys and girls hockey, which has really been something that has come up the last couple of budget seasons where the, the prices for ice time have just gone crazy, and you know, we want to offer, obviously, these sports to our kids, and we want to continue to do that, but we want to make sure that the fees are commensurate with what, what the increase has been for us. So we haven't looked at that in a while, so we want to make sure that hopefully we get more information on that from Eric, and, and you guys can take a look at that in either August or September, and we can do that for the winter season this year. But a lot, a lot got done this year. I, you know, I thought, I was talking to Tim about this, I thought it was a really positive school year. Teachers were super upbeat and positive, they worked hard as always. You know, I think we're finally getting out of that COVID funk. I think last year was, the year before we were getting out of it, and I think now we're really getting out of it, and things are getting, not back to normal, but, you know, we're, we're seeing some of the activities and some of the events and that we do getting back to normal, and, and hopefully people are getting a good rest this summer because we had a lot of tired people here for a lot of years, so. But can't thank them enough. You know, our, our entire staff, not just our teachers, but everyone, just doing a really great job, and those of you that read the newspaper or read the MASC every day, you know it's not like that in everywhere, so we've, we've done some really good stuff here, and I'm proud of the work that we've all done here.
I think it's really great to see, I was thinking, as I drove in today, like, we did this a year ago, right? Like, didn't we approve this like on your birthday?
Yeah.
Right? Like.
Happy birthday, Will.
So I feel like that's, I, I mean, this is like a tremendous amount of work to do in one year, it's really impressive, and I I just love seeing the work that we did in the strategic plan, really allowing everybody to utilize this as, you know, what, what we wanted it to be, which is like a roadmap or a compass to really like come together and have everybody moving towards the same goals, right? Like, there was a lot of competing priorities in this, allowing us to be able to really define what we wanted to focus on it, and having everybody move together to do that, I think it's amazing to see. I guess my two follow-up questions would be, if we look at the dashboard now, what had we originally said in regards to updating statuses?
So we're gonna do it soon, at the end of the year. Yeah, so we're gonna do an update at the end of the year.
Okay, and then.
And, and, yeah, just to follow up on that, because I was gonna ask. What do we, as far as the categories and status are, what, started or not started, in progress?
Complete.
Okay, those are the three?
Yeah.
And those effectively the score is then attributed to each one?
That's right.
That's how you're getting the, the, the number?
Yeah, so the, so Neil attached a factor at each one. And, and then that's how he's getting the percentage.
Yeah, no, it was. I, I didn't want to interrupt him.
No, it's okay.
To, to actually approve it.
Yeah.
Approve the plan. You know, implement and actually begin monitoring it.
Right.
And more, more important, what I see as you go through it is living the plan.
Right.
Like, I think we see it in our, when I wear the corporate hat.
Yeah.
Sometimes that, that big strategic plan becomes the box.
Right.
In, in some places. It's, I don't see that at all.
Yeah.
You see it, you know, literally in the classrooms.
Right.
You know, so, I'm, I, I had comments, but I echo that. I mean, one, I say thank you. I think it was the two of you who were on that original committee, and it may even be worthwhile, like, give that team a shout out as they listen to saying, hey, this is the plan in action.
Right.
Yeah, and I would just, yeah, say, thank you, Dr. Marson, for that formal update, right? Because we talk so much about being transparent with the town in these.
Right.
I know, it's still kind of funk, I mean, we did the best we can, but like incomplete or have we started or whatever. But like, anyone who wants to know, we know there's not a ton of people listening to this, but that update, that's a lot of stuff that
Right.
You guys got done in the school this week.
Yeah, it's very impressive. So then my only follow-up question was, yay, we did a ton of work this year, but what's next? Like, what are you looking to add for next year, start for next year? I know some of these are still in progress.
So it will still be in progress. I think what we, what we did last year, which we found was really effective, was when the leadership team has their, we have their retreat in August that we sit down and we go through all of this, and we try to highlight what we, what we did this year, and then what, what are we gonna continue, and then what are the key things that we're gonna start this year?
Okay.
So do that process and then present to you, you folks in September. And then we can tweak it based on what you think is, you know, this is something we should be looking at or not. But I think getting everyone in the room and we have that conversation, and then allow me to presenting it to you, and then you folks tell me, yeah, this works, or maybe a little bit more here, there, and everywhere, you know, so.
So I don't want to jump the gun then, but I guess my one question would be, knowing that you do meet with your leadership team, and you guys have been actively working on this together, and there was a semblance of a roadmap and a destination. Has, has anything like, do you anticipate anything, kind of like jumping forward that you weren't seeing based on some of the work that was done, or based on anything that happened this year? That would kind of like, jump ahead at a priority for year two that maybe was supposed to be like a year four thing?
Yeah, I think, for me, and we'll be talking about it in the workshop, I think taking a closer look again at the mobile phone use and, and social media, I think we need to resurrect that again. I do, I think that needs to be something in, in it. I think we need to do, we, meaning us, have to do a couple of things. One is, look at it through a kid's lens and how we can best support kids and protect them. And then two, look at it through a teacher lens and how we can help them create an environment that is really conducive to teaching and learning without adding an extra layer.
Okay.
Because I felt like in the beginning of the year, up until maybe around, you know, winter break, I think the positive piece, the eighty-four percent that we got in the fall, I think started to wane because it was back on the teachers again in January, February, March.
And do you mind giving refreshing numbers, the eighty-four percent?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's the eighty-four percent, well, I'm sorry, was the, the, the teachers felt like what they were doing was working really well.
Okay. In regards to their personal cell phone, like how they were using it in their classroom.
Yeah, they felt like that was, what they were doing was working really well. And I feel like by the end of the year, that, that number is probably lower.
Thing when you come in their classroom, some of them allowed you to use it, so that space.
Yeah, so if we, as you as a school committee and we as a leadership team can look at it and say, you know, how can we look at it for the, you know, again, I know we're gonna talk about this, and, but how can we help kids, and then how can we help teachers and somehow bridge that so that we can do a little bit more in this area? But I know we'll discuss that during the workshop, or on the agenda, but I think, to me, that one pops up a little bit more. I think looking at, I'm excited to see what comes out of this R and D today.
Yeah.
From the culture responsive practices and, you know, what ideas our great educators have and how we can incorporate this, because it really needs to be incorporated in everything that we do, right? And I think that what we've talked about is that this will be the umbrella of belonging, right? So this is a belonging issue. And there's a lot that falls onto that umbrella, and I think that's what that group is gonna be doing today, is really establishing what that looks like. So excited to see what that, what that looks like. And I think the continually working with the town on, on revenue streams, I know that once the, once the final budget is done from the state, you'll see what we've talked about in, in meetings past where we built our budget based on thirty dollars a kid, and it might we built our budget based on thirty dollars a kid and it might end up being a hundred dollars a kid, right? So again, it all, it somehow all gets back to us in this community, which I, I feel strongly about. Other communities it doesn't, that the town will take that money and use it for other stuff. I feel like we always get the support so that it always comes back to the schools, even though the town is going to get that windfall of chapter seventy.
Right.
You know, versus what we have. So it's just less of townside money that's going to go to schools because of the additional chapter seventy money. But it's all a timing thing for us.
Right.
But I, I know that we'll have those conversations in August and be happy to, we'll be ready to bring you back. You know, what we think is the most important things to focus on this year and then you direct us how you want us to proceed.
So, and that, that's kind of like when you talk about your retreat for leadership. Some of the themes of the agenda are mobile, you know, digital, social, culture responsive practices. And then this, this would be outside that. When you, I had the last one, I was like, working with the town on revenue streams, but there's, there's always
So we look at the whole plan and we, so we have it all up and we do chart paper and decide like, what are we going to work on? What is, you know, who's going to do this? Should this wait another year? Is this still in progress? So we go through that whole process.
You guys literally will pull up.
The entire thing. Yeah, the entire thing.
And that's with, that's with your leadership team? Yeah. What I wonder too, just as you go review it. Michelle, on the one hand, some things you may pull forward from year four. Other things you might say, hey, year one, we didn't quite get that, right? Hey, that was a bigger, you know, bigger thing. I actually, one comment I wrote down and this make, this is going to kind of blend into the work stream of the workshop. Anyways, but you're building SEL, you know, into the curriculum. I also kind of wonder, what did I write this down? With the SEL is kind of more like the umbrella for some of these other topics are, would wind up landing. And I thought I wrote that down here.
Yeah. I mean, I think belonging is the umbrella that SEL, they all kind of fall under that, right?
Correct. Like that, that's, and that's what I think it may be, I don't know if you want to use the word rebranding, but the terminology may change. But you may have that. You know, I think we used to have David here a fair amount, but that umbrella where you, that, that's, that may start to reside.
Yeah. I mean, of course the school start time is going to be a big part of it too, right? I mean, that's the thing. The nice thing about this plan is there's big items and there's items that are really important, but not as time consuming. Or items that impact smaller groups of people, not the entire district, right? So there's, there's many items on here that impact the entire district and some that are just targeted into certain areas. So school start times obviously is a big one for everyone, which we'll be working on that for sure all fall. A part of what we're doing.
I mean, my, I would just say, I mean, I was, I was blown away as I read through the progress. We, we go in, we do our monthly meetings. You know, we, we see some of it. We definitely do not see all of it. Like, and I just kind of, as, as I reviewed yesterday and a little again, like some of the key themes I see, just restating, and again, I, I say thank you, you know, to, to what you're doing and thank you. Again, like the group on the, the strategic plan, you put that in motion, right? Jeff, just absolutely. I know you said it a bunch. One comment that surprised me during the year, when we talked about a dashboard, a scorecard. Jeff is like, no, I want that up now.
Yeah.
You don't always see leaders saying, I want that now because it gives me accountability and that I can work with that with the team. But I think some of the big themes I see, like bringing the town together. In some cases it's addressing risks or, you know, capitalizing on opportunities, like what you're doing with the town safety committee. You know, police and fire, they don't always get together.
Right.
Right.
You know, you're getting in the same room. The schools can kind of be that, that rallying point. You know, some of the schools partnerships that we, we started working with, you were, you were super active in saying, yeah, let's bring PTO, MCPE, CPAC and some others together. That fed into some of the communications work you're doing with Chris.
Tim, to your point on that, you know, getting those folks together, I'm on that committee, this police chief's committee for MASSS and I'm amazed at how many police chiefs don't even talk to the superintendent and vice versa. Like there's no, there's like silos, right? And if the community is even bigger, I think it gets even worse. So I think it's just, we're really fortunate to have, you know, people that want to work together and want to do what's best for the citizens and certainly everyone wants to do what's best for the kids, which is really important. So that's been a great addition is that, that monthly meeting and having those conversations with both of them.
No, that's, that's great. And we, we saw it. I remember at least Leo, you would remember like in two thousand twenty, we had several meetings with the warrant committee. And I called it the battle over budget. Right? And you look at what you guys, what we did last year where the warrant committee came forward and said, hey, I have an idea around, you know, one of them was, was starting to think about, you know, pre-funding the schools, so to speak.
Yeah, I would say there's always been a decent back channel and front, front channel communication with previous school committee members and warrant committee as well. I think, you know, Jeff's did a good job of facilitating a lot of that too, you know, making sure that there's, you know, warrant committee just doesn't want any surprises, right?
Right.
Yeah. Hats off to them.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they
They do a phenomenal job.
So, so I mean, but I look at that, like bringing the town together is fantastic, like improving our operating model. We talked about not just acceptance, but implementation of the plan. You know, some of those that, like, like implementing, you, you talked to other schools, the, the, those home connections, you call them. Was, was fantastic. I think we, we see it, Michelle, it was great, like the last ten days of school, but like, you know, the, the communication engagement.
The countdown.
That gets easier when we're bringing the groups and the town together, you know, take advantage of the opportunity we have in the schools, like we, we can bring, bring folks together. But I, I mean, that we're continuing to make that. One thing I thought was interesting, I am sometimes like the corporate hat. Typically it's the assessment or like the communications. Chris gave us the assessment. And usually everybody knows the ten, whatever it is for the assessment, you add another zero to the end of it because they come back with the implementation. Not, not the Medfield schools. The assessment comes in and you're already making the changes, you know, and with your own, with resources we have, you say, yeah, I think we can actually update our websites by reallocating some dollars or rationalizing some, some services and do that with at no cost. But you already, literally you were seeing some of those changes one month after.
Now, if we change the parent communication tool next year, I'm sure, I'm not sure that would be a freebie, but it could be revenue neutral for sure, if we get rid of other things. But I think, yeah, I think we're, we tried to do some of the, as Chris called it, low hanging fruit that we can just do right away, you know, with the website and the newsletter. The one thing I was going to ask you guys about the newsletter is one of the things that Chris and I have talked about is it's great that the newsletter goes home to all parents, but if there's a way other than just posting on the website, if there's a way to get it to all citizens, right? So that everyone gets a chance to see what's going on and what we're doing. So I was thinking about checking with the town on that because I know they have an email system that they could even just do the three links for the last three months and if people can delete it if they want, or they can look at it if they want to.
I wonder that, sorry.
I think that'd be helpful. I mean, you know, who takes those is, Pete Peterson takes them and puts
Oh, right. Right. That's a good idea. Yeah.
And again, I'm not super familiar with the, the way the town utilizes their email system, but I think they have an opt-in or an opt-out depending on the group as well.
Okay.
Right? Like you could sign up for, I thought that was, because this is how it was presented, the SBC.
On the town website, you can sign up right on the front page.
And you can set up for alerts for different things. But I guess my point was going to be like, maybe there's a school option that could be put in there.
Right, right.
And then if people want to opt-in to receive your
That's a great idea.
Goes there versus just blasting the whole town.
I just think it's kind of, you know, as a follow-up to the state of the schools, right? So you have the state of the schools that goes out. And then this, this would be a monthly follow-up so that folks could just fall, if they want to, follow along with what's, what's happening.
I mean, I get annoying email, but if they don't want to read it, just don't read it.
Yeah.
When they want to read it, read.
Yeah. No, no, my other, my last comment was just, and then there's the stuff we just don't see in the curriculum. When I went, it was, wow, we did that.
Yeah.
And, and that's you had a good year. It was, we, we had some luck this year too. There wasn't as many fire drills.
Right.
That, that's just part of the, yeah, but we see what can happen.
Right.
Let you do what you're supposed to do.
Right.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah, I don't want to say another word. Okay. Yeah, the scorecard, we continue to update that. So
Yes. So in, in a lot of this, to your point, we've, we did the breakdown. Remember we talked about how the dashboard, you had looked at doing each individual one?
Yep.
As a rating? And, you know, we, we played around with it a little bit. So the issue with what, the way we have it now is that there's going to be key actions in evaluation indicators that are complete and some that aren't. So it's going to stay in progress. You know what I mean? So like, for instance, one point one will probably stay in process because we're still doing some of the, it wouldn't be a check off to be done. It's always going to be in progress. So I'm not sure the percentages will change a ton this year. They could. But we've, we've hit on the key actions and the evaluation on a lot of these, but not the entire one on each one of them. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think we talked about that.
Yeah, we did. We talked about that.
We weren't expecting the needle to jump a ton from the first year and it shouldn't. That would be weird, right? Like you did everything your first year.
Yeah, yeah. Would not be realistic.
I think it's recording like action items sort of occurring, you know, in, in result of, and I think we talked about it too, Jeff. I mean, you know, you're always working on something. It's just now you're working on this. So, you know, aligning what you're working on. I, I think it's more of just communicating and being transparent about why we're working on X, Y, Z and how, how evaluation alignment works helps to improve reaching a student that needs differentiation, you know, with the classroom, like to Will's point. You know, how do those work together, you know?
Yeah.
And then I think obviously we're not expecting it to be explained, but, but that, that work signifies those actions, I think. So I think it's just communicating a lot of the work that you already do plan and it's aligned to the strategic plan.
So, but the way I, Jeff, I think I'm, I'm looking at the scorecard. So today, you've got like in section one, there's one, two, three, four, five, six that are in progress. And I'm, I'm assuming that, that, or the calculation is in progress is worth some, some points.
Right.
And, and I think we talked about it, like, look, this is the first time you could theoretically go to the level of your key actions being done. And that, I, I don't know whether that's good or bad, you know, but it could, you don't want them, like the KPIs and the measurement system to become the, the checkbox item that it's, it's the substance behind it. But I, I think it, it might be interesting because I, I think there's a certain element of satisfaction when a key action is green.
Right.
Right? Okay. It, it just jumps off the page. That might be something that this is the view we see as you work with your leadership, though you have that next, that's what we're always doing in, in a corporate space is like the operating review has the central KPIs and then every one of those has their own.
Okay.
You know, it's a secondary dashboard that's built on the key actions that may or may not. I don't know that we need to be dragged into that, but it would be a natural piece for you. And, you know, it gives you a little more latitude, but that way you, you know, when we say, hey, when is this forty percent for one dot one, you say, well, all right, it's, it's the item three to determine appropriate SEL work at each level.
Yeah.
Right? So like, that's kind of how I think about it. And then if it's working really well, you can then roll that in.
Okay.
It would, it would be an easy, it was, it was kind of cool. I don't know if you guys saw it, but originally it was like, the dashboard was like eighty percent because we weren't doing it at each, at, at each level.
Right.
And so I, I had no issue like with it, but yeah, it may not change year two or three, but it, like, I think that would be a natural way for you to maybe try that out with your team.
Okay. Yeah, I like that idea.
And, and we don't, you know, and see how that goes, but that, that would be very natural that it would roll right up. It would just use the same form. And once one of these is green, it triggers.
Right.
You know, triggers that. So it, it's not, it's very, it's like, let's, that's why I think by design, seven pages of what we do. This is a little more qualitative. You know, and, and the quantitative results. We're, we're reviewing that during the year. Okay. No, that's a great update. And I, I don't mind that we go a little long on this because it's, I think it's, you know, one of the agenda items for workshop.
Right.
Priorities. So I think they're so linked.
So we'll do the same thing in September, give you guys an overview of, you know, what we think of the key areas to focus on for this school year, and then we can adjust based on your feedback. But we'll do that like we, we did the previous year. That, that worked, that cadence worked well for everyone? It was September, January, June?
Yeah. No, it's working pretty well. And again, you'll get a feedback from us through the workshop and that helps you with your leadership.
Right, for sure. Yeah.
And then it's a little
Yeah, it's good timing for all of that.
I think that's what I'm saying. It's, that was my second one and, and I'm there with this represents improving the operating model.
Right.
We don't want to be so rigid that it's like you're rushing to get, you know, meeting metric or at the meeting, but it's coming, it's, it's coming together. Okay. Are we okay on strategic plan progress update? Okay. And then the policy review. The, let me prove the first readings.
So we had asked for the ACAB to have a first reading today because we were alerted by our attorneys that this needed to be updated.
Yeah.
Based on a law change that just came out and as I said before, depending on what happens in November, it might be a change again.
Yeah. So in that, in the timing of that again is, is working where we may otherwise have pulled it out and handled that independently, but we are tracking to, to. So I think the ACAB is first reading and Jay has gone from informational to first reading. And is there any questions or comments on ACAB or Jay? And there's one, I, I did get some, one comment that I'm reviewing with Jeff. Somebody on a couple, a couple of them, but I, I think we haven't made a review, so we probably have an update on that. Maybe nothing major as far as I can tell. Okay. So then the second one is section I, instructional, second reading and potential vote. And so is there any questions or comments from section I?
I had two. So IE, organization of instruction, it had like an asterisk, but then the thing that was asterisk was actually struck out at the bottom. And then on IHAM dash R, health education exemption procedure. There's an opening parentheses on exemption procedure, but not a closing parentheses. So.
Which one was that again?
IHAM dash R.
Thank you. IHAM dash R.
Yeah.
I can see it. Where, where is it?
Yeah, I don't have an IAH.
You said IHAM dash R.
Oh.
The exemption procedure.
Yeah.
IA, gotcha.
Andrea, you get that? Okay. And if we're going to take it to a vote, I may ask you to record with those two changes.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. Any other? And we've gone through these. Okay. Is there, and if I get the right wording, so we're going to, this is not the, we're going to vote to approve it. So is there a motion to approve policy manual section I instructional in form with the two amendments that Michelle has referenced included?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
You're appearing all week. You're appearing all week.
If you wait.
Great. So future agenda items in this, I want, I want to check on
Did Jay already?
Oh, I was, I wanted to check his first reading, gotcha.
Yeah. And we, we, you know, if there was anything brought up. Yeah, and we, you know, if there's anything brought up. So, speaking of Jay, the, so Jay is the last section of the manual, and so what we like to do is try to get that, get Jay approved, and then officially approve the manual in form, and I'll get the wording right. But, so as we've taken each section and approved it, MASC owns the master, they're then updating the master with our changes, we collaborated with them, and what we would vote then is really just to convert the manual from in-form to being the manual. That allows them to then finalize that, deliver us discs in the office, written copy, which is official, and then any future updates would be done online. And, you know, I don't know about you, but every time we have to scroll through this, we won't have to do that, it'll be, you know, nicely set up the way MASC should. So, we'd love to get that approved in June, if possible. That gives Jim Hardy from MASC enough time to get that done for the school year, is the period before his retirement. So, the only thing is, I think, I wanted to see if we could, we were gonna do that as a Zoom meeting next week, and I think there was potential conflict we had on the 25th, so I wanted to see if we could do it.
And we have building committee on the-
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah, and we, I think back then, we decided you prefer the normal time, is that correct?
Move it to seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
After dinner.
Yeah. So you have building committee on the 26th.
Correct.
Tuesday. Right, but I think he wants to move it.
Yeah, so what do you want to move it?
I do have a conflict as well, so.
What about the 27th? I can do the 27th.
27th's work, it's fine.
Can do that.
Okay, all right, so that, if we can just do the policy in-form vote on the 27th at 7:00 PM, and that will be a Zoom meeting. And, okay.
27 will be Zoom.
Yeah.
27 will be Zoom.
Yeah, it'll be Zoom. All right, so, we're gonna adjourn the regular meeting, and maybe, why don't we take a five-minute break, and then we're gonna call the order of the school committee workshop, but I believe, maybe we, we open that up officially, or can we keep this running?
You want to close that, want to close the-
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Aye.
Okay.
This is government at work.